Okay, everybody. Welcome. It's March 11th, 2021. It's our regularly scheduled school board meeting. I'd like to call it to order. And Mrs. Hatfield, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick? Yes, opposite. Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Tonight, all of the school board members received an addendum to the agenda. And the addendum is to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Olentangy Teachers Association. We will discuss this later, but just for those tuning in and listening, I just want to know, we've offered the teachers a one-year extension, keeping everything exactly the same. This is normally a negotiation year, but because it's been such a unique year, we've offered them an extension. They have accepted. We'll be approving this later in the meeting, but we need to amend the agenda. So the board action item will be to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Olentangy Teachers Association. So do I have an approval of the amended agenda?
I move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we do have a presentation tonight. We have a presentation on the student well-being update. And we have Dr. Alicia Behrens with us, and she's going to be providing us with an update. Could please join us?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me to provide a student well-being update for you tonight. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview and update on what we've been doing during this very unique year here at Olentangy. So just to briefly review our non-academic barriers and what we're addressing when we're talking about student well-being, is really all of those things that could be affecting a student's learning that is not necessarily related to a learning disability, but all of those other things that our students are struggling with. So we have our umbrella here that covers mental health, substance use, physical health, safety and security, and behavior. We like to remind you guys and the teachers that the idea is we have to Maslow before we bloom. So when the teachers want to go to their blooms taxonomy, we always have to make sure the students feel safe, they feel included, they feel like they belong, and all of those needs are met before they can actually achieve their maximum learning. So our current staffing, we've shared with you before, our tier model that we have for our non-academic barriers. Our tier one, which is universal supports. Our tier two is brief and targeted interventions. And our tier three, which is more intensive supports for a small group of individualized students. With tier one, we have 49 school counselors, 26 clinic aid nurses, and six school resource officers. In tier two, we have five school social workers, 28 school psychologists, and nine and a half school nurses. And then for our tier three, we have 12 mental health specialists and three behavior specialists. So throughout the district, ultimately, we have 22,232 students who ultimately get supported in this model because we are providing supports to all of our students through the universal preventions. But just to briefly highlight kind of the different areas that we're supporting our students and give you some numbers related to that. For our nursing support, we have 155 individualized health plans, 108 medical 504s, 399 food allergy action plans, 188 asthma action plans, and 76 seizure action plans. These numbers are actually a little bit lower because any students who are on CDL, who are not coming into the building, wouldn't necessarily have their plans since the teachers aren't necessarily needing to support those. I do want to note as well, we recently were told we're going to be provided with a very large number of rapid COVID tests to provide to our students and staff. So we are working on a procedure to use those COVID tests. If we have a student or a staff member who comes down ill to the clinic and needs to be sent home, we can offer that rapid test to them if they would like to take that home and follow the instructions. It's through Abbott, and the ESC is providing those. And it does come also with a link to a telehealth provider who will walk them through giving that test to themselves and interpreting the results. And that way, if the student or staff member has a negative test and they're no longer experiencing symptoms, then we can consider letting them come back to the building if we know for sure that that's not a concern. So we should be getting those either today or tomorrow, and then distributing them among the buildings. For our behavior support with our three behavior specialists, we currently have 67 students who are receiving behavior support. So they are doing functional behavior assessments and writing behavior plans for students, or also doing classroom management and going in and helping teachers with universal classroom behavior supports as well. As of now, we have all the tier levels for mental health support in every building. We have school counselors, school social workers, and mental health specialists assigned to all of our 24 buildings. And actually, 25 because we have Oasis covered as well. So with our school social workers, they support about 450 students. And again, we have five of them, and they each have five buildings apiece. So they are spread pretty thin, but they do a great job. The hybrid model has been a bit of a challenge for them, but with going back full-time, that will certainly make seeing kids a little bit easier. Our ESC mental health specialist supports about 35 students. Our Centaro K-8 mental health specialists support about 243 students. And OSU at the high school is supporting about 125 students. So I wanted to talk about not only the support that we're providing for our students, but we have a three-tiered stool approach as well, that we also need to make sure-
That was your best attempt at a stool.
I'm sorry. I'm a little frustrated. That's my stool. Jack said it looks like cow udders. I should have maybe run it through communications a little bit better to make it look a little fancier, but yes. So we are also providing support to our parents through parent education and different supports so that our parents can support our students, and then also trainings and support to our staff so our staff can also support our students. Because we know, I know that we'll never have enough mental health staff, and we need to make sure that the parents are getting the things that they need, as well as our staff members to be able to support the well-being of our students. So some positives and challenges that we've had this year. It's been a different year. Everything has been a little bit different. Obviously, our nurses are working very hard with our ill clinic and our well clinic, but I really wanted to highlight some of the positive outcomes that we've had. Obviously, with this, we've had a much heightened awareness of our student well-being and making sure that we're focusing on that because our students are struggling as much as our adults are. So we want to make sure that we're providing that support. So we've been able to highlight the resources that we've had to provide to our students and our staff members. We certainly have had students who have done very well in the hybrid or CDL model and very much enjoyed it. It's given some of our students who maybe have more school anxiety and things like that, a little bit of a reprieve from that. So we're preparing, obviously, to then give them extra support once they're coming back to the building next week. We've been able to learn new technology and ways to support the students. We created Google classrooms in which we can have spaces for students to go do mindfulness activities and different things. And we've been able to take those resources and build them now, but they're going to last us for a lot longer than just this year. We've been able to use these opportunities to build coping skills and resilience in our students and our staff members because certainly, we're all living through this experience together. And it can be a traumatic experience for all of us, but we've been able to take that, provide that support, and help our students and staff build those coping skills and resiliency skills that then they can use in future difficult times. And then one really good positive I want to bring up is our virtual parent presentations. We struggle, as you know, with having our, we have these live presentations. We love to offer them to our parents, but it's difficult for them to get there. And PPT provides childcare, but that's not always feasible either. We have had a wonderful response to our virtual parent presentations where we have a good chunk of families who are able to sign on and watch it live, but then being able to look at the number of how many people have accessed it afterwards from the live recording is just really, really a great opportunity for them to be able to access it at other times. So that's certainly something we're looking at continuing in the future, even when we do start having live parent presentations again. Being able to livestream that and have it recorded for future viewing, I think is going to be very, very helpful. So some challenges that we've had, like I mentioned, the school social workers navigating the hybrid model. They've tried to make sure they're at their buildings on an A day and a B day to make sure they're seeing those kids. So juggling that schedule has been hard. Hopefully, going back to the full in-person will alleviate that. Our Centaro and OSU staff have been completely virtual up to this point, but they are also transitioning back to in-person now that our students are coming back as well. So again, hopefully, both of those things will be less of a burden. Continuity of support has been a little bit difficult. Sometimes it's difficult to make those virtual appointments and get in touch with those kids or those parents, but we're still trying and doing the best we can. When we have some of this virtual model, it's been difficult to have that community building and have teachers build those relationships. But again, everyone's doing a really good job of trying to overcome a lot of these barriers, and I think they've done a fabulous job. And then hopefully, we'll only get better once we are moving back into in-person. And then lastly, we've had difficulty with our social emotional learning prevention because we aren't necessarily having a bunch of extra staff or outside community members coming in and doing those presentations they normally would, such as signs of suicide. So we've been, again, trying to be creative and doing a virtual model of that, and then trying to figure out how to do the screener and whatnot. So trying to navigate some of those have been a bit of a challenge, but again, we're working on overcoming them. And I feel like, again, building those resiliency skills, we've been able to achieve that and then use them going forward. So looking ahead, we have done a lot to help support our students and our staff in transitioning back to the full model. We've already sent out lots of tools and resources to our teachers, letting them know that this is going to be sort of like the beginning of a school year. You're going to have a bunch of kids who haven't been in the same classroom together. So you're probably going to have to spend the first few days similar to how you would at the beginning of the school year with resetting those expectations, getting to know each other, really focusing on that social emotional learning, and trying to find out if there are some kids who are struggling and get them the help that they might need. And then also giving the staff members that grace to allow themselves to transition back to it as well because it's a change for everybody. We are looking at continuing to beef up our social emotional prevention programs. We were provided with some prevention funding through the Mental Health Board that we've been able to implement rocks programs at all of the elementary schools for next year. We're also going to be doing the PACS Good Behavior Program and start rolling some of that out. So we're really looking at ways that we can continue to include more prevention programs so that we have hopefully less intervention down the line. Again, our parent presentations, we launched our Parent Academy, which we're housing PPT and the different equity and inclusion and Portrait of a Learner all under this umbrella of Parent Academy. So we can house all of the great things that we're doing in Olentangy to support our parents in one place so that parents can easily find that and access whatever it might be. So even if there's something going on at Walnut Creek, a parent from Scioto Ridge could still look and see that there's something that they might be interested in. Or if there's something in People Services, but their student's not on an IEP, but it's still relevant to them, they're certainly welcome to join and participate in that as well. And then finally, the staff professional development, we're continuing to beef that up. Katie Branson and I recently became instructors for youth mental health first aid. So we're planning on rolling that out and training our staff in that so that they have more tools in their tool belt to be able to handle students who might approach them with mental health needs, and then continuing our trauma-informed care trainings as well. So continuing to support students, staff, and parents at all of the levels. Any questions?
No, I just want to make sure, taking the opportunity now, while Alicia's here and publicly thank her for all her work. She's been with us now five years. One of the foundational pieces that I presented to you to the board over six years ago was addressing non-academic barriers to learning. And Alicia certainly has been instrumental in doing all of that work, and it's just been amazing. The board, again, we get asked that question, that general question all the time. We're not doing enough, or we're stating that we're not doing enough, or what are you guys doing for all these different areas? And again, just like in so many ways, the reality is that we're doing a lot, and the board authorizes the commitment of the resources that is necessary to get this work done. So, you know, we have added staff in all of these areas, but it's what our kids need to be successful. So, and I don't know how she's done, and she finished her doctorate during the pandemic. She's going to Ohio State to get her counselor certification so she can better understand and support counselors. And if anybody went to Fantasy of Lights this year, she played Mrs. Claus in Fantasy.
Absolutely, we went.
She's amazing. So, thank you.
I just have a question. You know, tonight, we're approving the memorandum of understanding with the Delaware Moral Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, and we share the cost of Centaro with them. But can you go into, for our high school students, what our Ohio State contract has available to them? Because I believe it's free services that they may not be aware of.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I answered the question.
The counseling services that are available through Ohio State.
Oh, yes, and our students are utilizing them as well. So we've worked to create a referral process. So the school counselors and administrators have a referral form that they fill out that then goes to our social workers and our mental health specialists through OSU. And they determine if it's a tier two or tier three student. And then if it's tier three, then they get linked up with that OSU clinician, and they've been providing that support to our high school students.
Just want to reiterate that, that the support is there. I'll just reach out.
Yeah, because the reality is, if a person in the general public calls a mental health service, says, "I need to see somebody right away," it's going to be months.
Correct.
Yeah. But we have access.
Immediately.
The difficulty, though, is we have access immediately, but we also have 2,000 students at each high school. As much as I would love to be able to provide immediate mental health support for every student who needs it at our high school, we're not quite there, but we certainly are getting as many as we possibly can.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack read you out about Mrs. Claus. I didn't know.
Okay. And the board president's report. I just want to reiterate that in recent weeks and probably again tonight, the Board of Education has received several emails regarding the district's brand identity project that is currently in process. And just to reiterate, this has been a three-year process that we have been working on this. The Brand Identity Project is part of the district's strategic plan as one of the 12 strategic objectives in the plan. The district has rolled out new district-wide brand identity. You know, we all saw that. It's right up there on the screen. And now, then we had new mascots for the elementary buildings and preschool, which we never had before. And the new imagery for the mascots at the middle school level, that's been completed. And now, we're currently working at the high school level. Each building has their own brand project team comprised of secondary-level staff, athletic directors, administrators, alumni, and students. The parameters given to the brand project teams by the board specifically for middle and high schools was for the building to retain the mascot names, but to update the imagery by removing Native American images, as well as images that are trademarked by other entities, which we have also fell in line with. So we've got to correct that as well. We continue to receive emails and several from several community members regarding the Olentangy Braves with a request to consider changing the name Braves. The Olentangy High School Brand Project Team has outlined goals for their new brand identity within the current parameters of this project. These elements are to honor tradition, represent a brave community, use the BRAVE acronym, which is Balance, Resilience, Attitude, Value, Empathy, and the descriptors of fearless, motivated, driven, steadfast, and powerful. We ask that the community allow the committee process to take its due course as this is done with every other committee of this district. We don't step in and say, "Oh, redistricting committee, we need to do it this way." We let the committee process take its due course. So that's what we are asking. Once the committee process is completed, they will be presented to the Board of Education. Next, on Monday, March 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the School Advocacy Committee is hosting what has become an annual event. We're doing a school funding forum. If you ever go back into your memories on Facebook, my memory from seven years ago was promoting the school funding forum that we had over in the Shanahan Building in the team room. So this has been something we've been doing for too many years now. So participating in this forum will be Representatives Chris Jordan and Rick Carfania, as well as State Senator Andy Brenner. They will be participating with Superintendent Mark Rafe and Treasurer Emily Hatfield. The format will be similar to how we conducted the redistricting forums. Where questions are typed into the chat box. It will be moderated by Holly Hansen, who chairs the school advocacy committee. And Lakisha and I will be monitoring the questions as they come in and asking them as to which presenter should be asked the question. So that's how it's going to be run. It's a free event, March 22nd, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And I hope that everyone can participate because, as Mr. Rafe has stated many times before, we have a lot of issues that come before the school district, but this is the one issue that we can all get together and rally around, which is an increase in state funding. And that is what I have tonight. Superintendent Rafe, you're up.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone, and to all of our viewers out there. So we'll start with a big shout-out to our Treasury Department. They have been recognized by the Auditor of State for the ninth consecutive year, earning the Auditor's State of the Award with Distinction for their fiscal year 20 audit and financial statements. So congratulations to Emily and her team on that outstanding award. Well-deserved for you and, more importantly, for your team. Because as we both know, they do all really hard work.
Thank you.
Especially the nuts and bolts of that audit process.
Yes, they do.
Not a lot of fun. But congratulations, well done. So, oh my gosh. I've asked, and I've had pictures of me included, just failed to follow that simple directive. So last week was Reading Across America Week. The students celebrated all throughout the district. You know, it was one of those events where we'd get kids even more excited about reading. I had the pleasure of reading Froggy Learns to Swim to CDL kindergarten classes. So thank you to Mrs. Donofrio for asking me to do that. I enjoyed it very much. I hope the kids who watched the video enjoyed it just as much. I will admit, self-admit, that my reading to my grandchildren now, I get to get back into those old, the monster of reading days. So I like books that have a lot of different noises and things like that. So a lot of fun. Again, our Food Service Department, Bethany Lanko and her team, continue to just do an outstanding job. You know, as you know, we are returning next Monday to full in-person. The government waivers, though, will continue to provide meals to all of our students at no charge this school year. And again, I always have to remind parents, that doesn't mean you won't see lunch balances going down because it doesn't include à la carte or extras. It's one meal, and you know, obviously, there's a certain designation of that one meal. So parents, remember that next week. You shouldn't be getting charged for the meal, but you will be getting charged for à la carte. So they will continue to provide opportunities for weekend snack packs and things during spring break, and then they'll continue to provide pre-ordered meals for CDL students. So, you know, again, this is just another area where people have stepped up in a pandemic to do above and beyond. Our Food Service Department is working harder than they ever have this year. So congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Lanko and her team. We do have our next one-community conference coming up. There are, it's a district service plunge. There are 10 service projects that are going to be happening all throughout the district that people can sign up and participate in. The Equity and Inclusion Team created this digital notebook that provides information on all the service partners and projects that are out there. So it's a great way to, again, get involved in the community with this first annual service plunge. We have the Portrait of a Learner series started. We had the first one a week or so ago. The next one coming up, I want to highlight again, Jonathan Jurevich will be doing a 30-minute TED Talk on kindness. So again, thank you to the curriculum team for putting all that together. It's a great opportunity for our community to participate in that project. As you know, we did have our second round of vaccinations. We hosted at Berlin High School. I think the final number was over 4,800 vaccinations given on that day. We did open it up to about 1,000 community members, so they were able to receive their first dose. Sheila Hiddleston, the Health Commissioner, called and asked me, "Is there any way you think we can pull that off?" And I said, "Absolutely, we'll help figure it out." And it really went, I think, fairly smoothly. People got through quickly. We condensed the timeframe, but I'm just really proud to be able to participate and get as many people in the county vaccinated as quickly as possible. So we'll see moving forward. The vaccinations obviously are ramping up and rolling out, and hopefully, more and more will get vaccinated. You know, I also want to make sure I highlight all of our team, the leadership team, really stepped up and helped organize this event, helped communicate Krista and Todd's team, Jeff Gordon and his crew. They were up there on Friday night, late, setting up. There just were so many people that stepped up to make this happen. So again, I'm just very, very proud of our organization for all that went into this. So we have here, the Ohio School Boards Association held their virtual spring conference. So again, we missed out on this in the fall, and we missed out now in the spring, the opportunity that two-pound piece of lasagna from the Ohio School Conference in Villanomano. But they did recognize Tyler Run Elementary School that was recognized as an outstanding school. As you know, they were recently awarded with Blue Ribbon School designation. And then Orange High School Art, teacher Stephanie Forney was recognized as an outstanding, the Orange High School Art Department was recognized as an outstanding program. So congratulations to both Tyler Run and Orange High School Art. So we are still in the redistricting process. We're in the process of analyzing the feedback, and the committee is taking all those pieces and parts. And I know it's hard for people to wait for this process to play out, and we are getting a lot of specific feedback. As I've said before, the feedback has been pretty consistent with this now being my third or fourth redistricting I've done since being superintendent, I think, third. By and large, the strong recommendation is to move somebody else's child or somebody else, some other neighborhood. And we get that. We've all been through it at some point in time, and we appreciate the passion. You know, again, I always appreciate the fact that people don't want to leave their schools. That means they really love their schools, and they love their school community. And we'll get through it. I'll have my recommendation to you at our March 25th meeting. I always want to keep giving an attendance model update here for us as we are now, well, tomorrow is our last B-day in the hybrid model. So we will be transitioning to the daily attendance model on March 15th. I have gotten, you know, some questions from some community members about considering pulling back. Some other districts have had increased cases or increased contacts. And, you know, I'm confident in our conversations with the Health District, with our team, and all the additional things we've put in place to accommodate the increased number of students that we will manage our way through this without having that huge spike in cases or quarantines. Because again, it goes back to the cases and quarantines that were really the biggest problem I was worried about mostly all year. I was worried about quarantines of staff, that now that are vaccinated, I won't have to worry about that. CDC guidelines now say anybody who has been vaccinated, if you're considered to be a contact, you don't have to be quarantined. So that really is a good sign for our adults. You know, as Alicia alluded to, that first week is going to be a little bit crazy. Patience, kindness, it's a lot like the first week of school. I know our bus drivers are going to do a great job, but they may run a little bit longer. When you're offloading twice as many kids- many kids potentially, it just takes a little bit longer. So our focus of our schools is going to be to build that school community. You know, we typically start a school year, we start on a Thursday and Friday. And Mr. Rafe came up with a great program for our buildings to just focus on getting to know kids and then building school community and told them, it's okay to not hammer instruction hard the first few days. I think that should happen here the first few days as we get back. There will still be people anxious and apprehensive. How do you bring them all together? So and then, you know, the process of making sure all the health and safety protocols are being followed with increased number of students. But as I said a month ago and two weeks ago, it is time to do this. And I have great confidence that we will be successful moving forward. So I want to also give you an update on end-of-year events. Graduation, obviously, is one of the most important that we do here at the end of the year. Our graduation date is set for May 23rd at the Schottenstein Center. Obviously, they have said there is increased numbers of guests allowed. They are still, OSU has still not released the Schottenstein Center for use by outside events. And even within the guidelines, the problem we're going to face with the SHOT is the health and safety and cleaning protocols in our tight window, which was something I did not know until this week, that there may have difficulty, they may not be able to accommodate all four graduations in one day. So then we have to discuss, do we have to do, obviously, we could do two, because they're telling us they're going to need up to a five-hour window in between events.
Oh, please.
Yes. So that's the new wrinkle, as you've heard me say repeatedly about a lot of different issues. Nothing's easy, whether it's redistricting or planning end-of-year events. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we have to plan four of them, and Orange and Liberty are huge events with over, I think Orange has 550 graduates. So we're going to have to make a decision here very, very quickly, because people are planning a lot of activities around these events. So obviously, I said the other options are stadium graduations or the drive-in graduations that we've done before. You know, I thought a week ago or two weeks ago, oh yeah, if we pull off the drive-through, we know how to pull it off, we'll do it the same way we did it last year. Well, if you remember when we did it last year, we did it early June. We weren't in school.
Yeah.
The Thursday and Friday of that graduation week, we're still in school. So that creates a problem. Creates a problem with athletic events, because they're still so early. When we did it before, there was no conflicts with events. So that's a new wrinkle that's been thrown into the mix. I know people want to know, and we want to get this decision made and push forward. There are a couple other things the schools are talking about. We are trying everything possible to get as many year-end activities in for our kids. Mr. Rafe facilitated a process with the principals to create a Google Doc and put in all their year-end events and activities and things they want to have. I don't know how many pages that document ended up being, but it was a lot. But we also have to be cautious, because the more we do, especially early on through the process, the greater likelihood that we may have cases and flare-ups and those kinds of things. So we are working through all this stuff as best we can. We are placing a lot of focus on the end-of-year activities for seniors, because obviously, that is a big event in kids' lives. But we're going to try to host as many of these year-end activities as we possibly can. With that, then they're highlighting some action items. We have a contract with Meta for retail electric services, and then, as Julie brought up with Alicia, the agreement with Delaware Mental Health, and then it is asphalt time. So we've got a big contract for asphalt paving and concrete improvement. So it's not just asphalt, it's concrete and asphalt. Mr. Gordon was able to get that to get out early, out for bid early ahead of other people, and we actually have a lower cost per square feet by, I think, around 70 cents than previous years. So.
That's good.
I already told you ahead of time, I wasn't engaging in asphalt banter. I'm trying to be good. Mrs. Patrick is not here to pick on you about asphalt, so. And there's our next round of important dates. Obviously, the daily attendance model is probably, in my mind, the biggest important date coming up there, as I highlighted, the parent, or the Portrait of a Learner, conversation with Jonathan Jurevich and the Parent Programs Team, as Alicia alluded to. Hard to believe, third quarters, end of third quarters right around the corner, and we also have a board meeting that day. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rafe? Okay. We'll be waiting for that graduation announcement, Mr. Rafe.
I know.
Treasurers report. At least it's always exciting around here, right?
You have a senior. I know you're waiting for it, too.
Well, and it's funny, because I keep getting a little, like, I'm really going to do, I'm like, we'll tell you when we know. We'll tell you when we know. So yes, our family is as anxious as everyone else this year.
So I wanted to start with Auditor of State Award with Distinction. I appreciate that Mr. Rafe brought this to the attention of the Board and the community. But I would also be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to just say thank you to my staff. We have a department of 11, including myself, operating a $400 million budget. And with that, all the funds included, we have Melissa Griffith, our Assistant Treasurer, who's in the photograph, as well as Amanda Burton. And then to my left in that photo is Mrs. Tori Hubner, who's the representative from the Auditor of State's office that came out to give us a word. But also on our team, we have Katie Bowser, Vicki Bober, Susan Colson, Leah Douglas, Jennifer Glorioso, Madison Ratliff, Tammy Riley, and Lori Zay. They're doing a phenomenal job of making sure that we continue to meet our auditing standards and can continue to share with our community that we are fiscally responsible and transparent with all of those records. So thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for all that you do to help support that effort. Next, I wanted to get into some FY20 district profile data. So this is data that is coming from the Ohio Department of Education and what is also known as the CUP report. So if you go to the Ohio Department of Education's website, you can look up district profile report or CUP report, and it will pull up these statistical pieces of information for you. They just released FY20 a couple of months ago, and we're excited to be able to have these graphics to share with the community tonight. Important information that we are looking at is our cost per pupil for FY20. So for ONTNG, our cost per pupil was $11,876. I rounded everything up, so I wasn't counting pennies. The state average cost per pupil was $12,692. What you see below in the graphic is taking a look at our top five ODE comparable. And I know this gets a little tricky when we talk similar districts versus comparable districts. Similar districts on the CUP report are taking a broader look at statistics. And so the average that's given in the CUP report is just over $12,700 per pupil. But the average that you see here is looking at our top five comparable schools. So the Ohio Department of Education will list this as a separate grouping mechanism, I guess, for lack of a better description. We have Upper Arlington, New Albany Plain Local, Dublin, Mason City, and then Lakota Local. We are the second lowest in that top five ranking, not very far off from Lakota. And what's important to note there is that average in the top five is over $13,000. So while we're not only low, but we are a couple thousand dollars less than that average as well. So those are good metrics to share with the community and how we are managing our funds. This next graphic, I apologize that the dollar amounts don't show up. The type is pretty small. But this is the same information. It's our cost per pupil information. Same top five school districts are comparable districts. And what I wanted to take a look at and share with the community on this is the type of expenditure that we're spending within that $11,000. What are we spending it on? The pink or red, as you can see on the graphic before you, depending on which screen you're looking at, the color's a little different. But the largest segment in that pink or red color is our instructional cost per student. The darker blue to the far right of the graphic is our administrative cost per pupil. ONTNG spends 67% on instructional cost. That's 2% higher than any of our comparables in this grouping, and only 10% on administrative costs, which is the second lowest spend percentage-wise on administration, and it's only off by 1% in this same grouping. So overall, the message is we are spending less per pupil. What we are spending is going mostly towards instruction, and our administrative cost percentages are not out of reasonableness for our comparable districts, and in fact, pretty low. So good information to share overall with our community and to be able to break down our cost graphically and report back that way. This next data point is looking at our foundation funding. We usually, when we talk about this metric within the five-year forecast, we take a look at what are we actually getting per pupil from the state in foundation funding? The difference when I say foundation funding versus all state funding is when the state takes a look at state funding, it's including more than just the foundation pieces. It might be picking up some, excuse me, I think my phone's in my pocket, which is what's making the microphone wee out a little bit. Try sitting it on the floor for just a second. But the state will include things like permanent improvement funds or other state fundings that we might pull separately out of the five-year forecast. So we really dug in and tried to get to that statistical foundation funding model. And so what you can see here is we take a look at our comparable, top five comparable districts. ONTNG is getting less than $500 per pupil for FY20. We are slightly under that. Our other comparables in this metric are getting around $1,300 per student, and we continue to get very low state funding. They're still looking at the district, of course, under the current funding model and saying, you're a wealthier district. You have higher-than-average median income. You can continue to afford to raise more tax dollars to pay for the education you are providing your students in your community. That's the basic message, and it has not changed since I've been a part of this leadership team. The state still continues to look at that, look at our district in that way. So this is why it's really important for us to participate with our legislators and talk to them about fair funding models and continue to push this statement. 5% of our revenue is coming from the state. The rest is coming from tax dollars. It's such an uneven balance, and the current funding model just caps us. Now, we know that the pandemic is a part of why currently in FY21, we are held low across the state. Foundation funding is held at a lower 2019 rate because of state budgets, et cetera. But what we're seeing about the state budget as we start to get reports from the state itself is that they're meeting and exceeding their revenue expectations. So we would like to see that come to fruition and have a fair school funding model or some other funding mechanism come forward that helps support getting rid of caps and guarantees, or at least adjusting them. We just don't get what we, don't get a fair amount, and we're still getting less than private schools or charter schools.
I just want to point out on this slide, back in the spring, both Mason and ONTNG were on the ballot for operating dollars. Mason had not been on in nine years. And when I started volunteering in this district, we were always looking at Mason, because it was growing so quickly, and then we surpassed it. Well, look at the state funding, and that's why they had not been on the ballot in nine years.
Right.
And so when people ask us, well, what will you do if you get more state funding? We stay off the ballot, and you can just look at Mason City.
Right.
Why didn't they stop growing?
Right, they didn't.
And the difference between that average of $13,051 and our $446, if you multiply that difference by our total number of pupils, it comes, is over $20 million, which is the equivalent of about five mils that we don't have to pass.
Yes.
Which stretches the levy obviously longer and longer and longer.
Right. But that's a perfect slide to show.
And if people that want us to add, add, add things, if you look at the difference between what Dublin spends per pupil and what we spend per pupil, and obviously, they get more per pupil revenue, but that difference is about, and you multiply that time our number of kids, that's about $40 million, which would mean for us to spend what, I'm not saying this is a negative about Dublin, but for us to spend what they spend per pupil, we'd have to pass an additional 10 mils. A lot.
See, I was focused on the other end of it, where Upper Arlington has got the most spending per pupil, the least funding from the state, and what I know, the least cooperative in terms of helping us with school funding.
Oh, yeah.
And those residents should be, you know, more aware of the burden that they're being asked to take with no appetite to go fix state funding.
Right. Same with New Albany.
Yeah.
A partner with us either.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all.
That was just a good, great conversation. Not at all. No, I think it's great conversation, and it's, you know, it's a good story to tell, and I'm happy to be able to bring information forward in a way that spurs those conversations and helps us share our story in a real way, in a real sense, to our community. So hopefully, they'll feel so inclined to help support that effort for that fair school funding and join us on the 22nd for that fair school funding advocacy, because it is very important for all of us in the community. Are there further questions on this or comments before I move to the next slide? So I wanted to come and also give you an update on the debt issuance. I know we had a discussion item at our last board meeting to talk about this. We have had another Facilities Committee, make sure I say the right committee name the same, a Facilities Committee meeting March 3rd, and the members voted to recommend the delay of elementary 17 construction for a year. That conversation was taking, took a look at enrollment models, where we are currently, where the projections had landed, and where we're going. Was a pretty, it was a really good conversation. I gave them some information about the fiscal implications as well, and then they took a vote to pass that recommendation forward. As we talked about the fiscal implications last board meeting, it would delay $1.7 million in the operating budget or the five-year forecast from fiscal year '24 and move it into fiscal year '25. That saves us that compounding of those expenditures per year. It would save an estimated $1 million of interest costs over the life of the debt. Typically, when we are issuing bonds, we are selling a 30-year bond. So it's $1 million over the life of that debt, and the net present value savings would be $577,000. Risks that are associated would be fluctuations in construction costs and interest rates that may occur in that year. But overall, I think that delaying the issuance of that debt is still the best methodology for us to continue to do. We don't need to issue it today. We shouldn't issue it today. And then take a look at our enrollment updates this fall, not only actuals, but another enrollment projection to determine the need and timeline for operating, for opening, excuse me, elementary 17, and using that to determine the final date of when we would go back for that issuance of construction costs. So I'm happy to have more conversation around that, but I think that's where, that's a sound recommendation coming forward, and we can apply that to the bond resolution that will bring March 25th for your approval. Are there any questions I can answer about that? Are there any questions I can answer about that for you?
That's good, good.
And that is all I have this evening, so I'll take a moment to sit down and we can move to the next agenda item.
All right, thank you very much. I'll let you take your seat. As you take your seat, I will remind everybody that public participation is thirty minutes. Because of the virtual setting that we're in, we're asking everyone to submit their public participation to a specific email address. And then Krista Davis, our communications person, reads them aloud. Then after the board meeting, not immediately after, but sometime after in the coming days, all of the public participation is scanned in and put on the website for people to see. Just like normal public participation, each person who submits public participation has five minutes to say what they want to say that Krista is reading. Did I cover everything there? Did I do everything?
I believe so.
Yeah, Mrs. Hatfield.
You see a list there, so.
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Hatfield is the timekeeper, so she, you might hear her say one minute or thirty seconds so that Krista.
I don't know if Krista was going to say it before she goes to highlight it. The second bullet, people who watch or look and comment or cut and paste our public participation sessions, the submissions read during this meeting are not the views of the person reading the comments, because I think there was a mistakenly, wrongfully, some, obviously, some of the public participation comments were not very friendly. And Mrs. Davis was on social media viewed to be the person doing that.
Right. Yes, they were incorrectly attributed to a her, and the comments were a him. And she's just the.
Just the messenger.
Just the messenger. Do not shoot the messenger. Thank you, Mr. Rafe, and Mrs. Feesel. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. The first public participation comment is from Salon Wise, forty-eight, forty-two, Normandy Drive, Galena, Ohio. Good evening, school board members. Words matter. They shape our attitudes, direct our actions, and reveal our intentions. Words form perspectives of ourselves, members of our community, and the world around us. Words are so important that the code of conduct found in the Olentangie handbook places boundaries on what words are and are not acceptable in our school buildings. The fourth code of conduct says this, quote, "Students shall not use obscene, vulgar, profane, or discriminatory language, make inappropriate gestures, actions, or possess vulgar materials. Note: Discriminatory language is defined as verbal or written comments, jokes, and slurs that are derogatory towards an individual or group based on one or more of the following characteristics: race, color, national origin..." Dot, 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 end quote. This code of conduct found in the high school handbook is important and ironic. It's important because it clearly states discriminatory language, including slurs, are not acceptable in our schools. It's ironic because the Olentangie High School mascot name is in fact a racial slur. The school itself is in violation of its own code of conduct. While there are conflicting views in our community regarding whether or not Olentangie High should maintain use of the name Braves, there is no question that the term Braves is offensive to many in the Native American community. Here is an excerpt from the Native Circle website, which is the oldest Native American educational website, quote, "What is wrong with Indian mascots and team names? The answer to this question is both complex and simple. The simple answer is that they are respectful and hurtful to First Nations people. Some of the names and antics seen at games are nothing less than racist. So here we are, decades later, and names like Red asterisk 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 NS and Braves are still being used by sports teams and by public schools with no thought of how blatantly racist these terms are. Since the first use of so-called Indian mascots over eighty years ago, real Indian people have publicly protested against them. Here, we continue that protest and ask that finally, after so long, people of good heart will listen," end quote. Regardless of our opinions, the name, the name associated with the Olentangie High School mascot is a racial slur. It is both offensive and demeaning to many Native Americans. That is just a fact. I, along with many other Olentangie parents, encourage, encourage you to change the mascot imagery and name at Olentangie High School because words matter. Thank you, Salon Wise of Parent Diversity Network. Next, Kim Allenbach, fifteen ninety, Kearney Way, Delaware, Ohio. Dear Olentangie School Board members, I'm writing to you today regarding the district rebranding initiative. It has come to my attention that the intention is to retain Braves as the Olentangie High School mascot to be used with updated imagery. This decision is misguided and does not address the original concern of removing offensive branding. I, along with many other Olentangie parents, disagree with this action. Repurposing the name Braves and using it to refer to those who exhibit bravery or in any other way is not a viable solution. When presented with Braves as a name of a mascot, the action of people being brave does not come to mind. Rather, the current mascot, which represents a racial slur that can be both demeaning and offensive to many Native Americans, does. If the intention of making changes is to repair damage and move to mascots that are not offensive, both, both the offensive mascot name and imagery should be changed. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Next, Ashley Wise, forty-eight, forty-two, Normandy Drive, Galena, Ohio. Good evening, board members. Thank you so much for the time, energy, and effort that you give to our district as you tend to the concerns and successes of our school district. One may wonder, since we are all still in the middle of a pandemic and trying to navigate safe and effective ways for all students to learn, why a community member would be so concerned about the rebranding of a high school mascot? However, many tasks and decisions are still going forth, and issues such as this will go along unnoticed and will find ourselves as a district repeating the offenses of long ago if we don't address them now, even in the midst of a pandemic. As you can see, I feel along with other community members that it is very important to truly stop and take the time to speak up about this concerning issue before it's too late. I feel it is very important, if you haven't already, for the board members and community members as a whole, to take the time to reflect on the perspectives that have been shared by myself and other allies over the last few board meetings regarding changing the offensive name of the Olentangie High School mascot Braves, and not to be conflated with the terms brave or bravery. While our voices as parents and community members do matter, we realize what matters the most regarding this particular issue are the facts and the opinions of the Native American community. We've taken the time to reach out to the Native American community and received correspondence with similar sentiments regarding this issue, which we have previously shared with you. Additional valuable resources are the Native American Indian Center of Central Ohio and the Native Circle Education website. I encourage you to take the time to view their statements regarding the issue of using First Nation mascots and team names at www.nativescircle.com/mascots and HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.naico.com. Words matter. Actions matter even more. And in keeping with our goal of one Olentangie, this decision matters. Thank you for your time, Ashley Wise. Next is Dennis Bell, eighty-one, twenty-two, Trail Lake Drive, Powell, Ohio. Dear Olentangie Board and Staff, since I thank the superintendent, staff, and board for being prudent months ago, I feel I should thank you once again as circumstances change. I know no decision, plan, or approach will be perfect or be implemented exactly as designed. I appreciate your measured and deliberate efforts to make the best possible decisions for all. I apologize for not being a louder voice or a more demonstrative in my thoughts over the last year, as that creates a skewed perception that only the loudest, sharpest, and most persistent voices have strong feelings on these matters. That perception is not accurate. For the record, prudence and thoughtfulness do not equate to fear. Demands and stomping feet do not equate to reason. As a parent, taxpayer, and constituent, I also share the need and desire for my children to receive the best education under the safest possible circumstances at all times. They deserve our best, most concerted efforts on their behalf. That brings me to the plan for full-time attendance. These plans depend heavily on everyone involved maintaining safe practices and protocols as prescribed. The truth is following the masking, distancing, et cetera, protocols has been spotty even under the hybrid model, has sometimes not been completely enforced, and will be even more important going forward. I understand this issue is fraught with conflicting priorities, opinions, and politics, but it seems to be the Achilles' heel in the plan. Please consider carefully what measures will be taken when your health and safety protocols erode, are not enforced, or ignored. This may become pivotal in getting the desired results or resorting to backup measures. I pray things get better with time and reconsideration of this policy is not needed. This message was also emailed to members of the board and administration. Next is Karina Turner, two sixty-five, Terraglan Drive, Delaware. Hello, my name is Karina Turner, and I am a parent in Olentangie. My kids attend Cheshire Elementary and Berlin High School. We've been here fourteen years. I've been, I have been on a bit of a journey after a group of parents in our district made it clear that keeping the Braves name with our rebranding was not the best decision. Not sure how I felt, I sent out to see if our current plans for OHS were on the right track. I didn't approach this with an agenda, just a desire to know how Native Americans feel about the changes. Was it going far enough? I reached out to twenty different federally recognized tribes and received feedback from three, as well as some comments from friends of friends. One person, Cherokee, said he didn't care about the name Braves, but that was not the sentiment in his community, and we should probably change it. The remainder of the communication said it's time to change. This feedback includes an email from the chief of the Eastern Shawnee Tribe. The other email referenced here was from a community member of the Delaware tribe. It's interesting that the two tribes who are most closely related to our area are the ones that responded. A sign? I have sent the correspondence I have received to Julie Feesel, Krista Davis, and Jackie Merkel. They have the full emails, but here are a few parts from the respondents. The consensus is to change the name Braves. I also had the honor of speaking with Chief Wallace on the phone, and her passion and love for her people was evident, as well as her compassion that this will be hard for us, but it must be done. Excerpt from Chief Glenna Wallace of the Eastern Shawnee Tribe. The word Braves will always be associated with Native Americans. Firemen are brave, police are brave, essential workers are brave, medical personnel are brave, but the word Braves, like it or not, will always be associated with Native Americans. Eliminating the imagery is the most expensive thing. If your school, your community, has already made that commitment, then my advice is to eliminate the word Braves. Choose another logo, one that will not continue to suggest Native Americans, even though that is what you intend. Don't just go halfway. I thank you for your sensitivity, your desire to do the right thing, and I realize that what I say might not be to your liking, but I must be honest with you and again, ask for you to, to think long-term. This will be an ongoing issue whether you want it to be or not. Respectfully, Glenna J. Wallace. Excerpt from Curtis Zinga, Director, Cultural Resources Department, Delaware Tribe of Indians. You can nuance the name Braves and try to justify it with a dictionary or thesaurus logic, but Braves is still clearly associated with a Native American male, oftentimes a warrior, not a knight, not an army soldier, not an athlete. So being real about this is the best way to confront resistance to change. I realize there will be a cost to the school district to rebrand the name, but that's the price to pay for doing the right thing. But it shouldn't stop there. There needs to be an information campaign as to why the change is appropriate. A lot of that will come from taking an honest look at the history of Ohio and its historic racism against the Delawares and other tribes like Shawnee, Wyandotte, Ottawa, Potawatomi. Board members, it's time to change. It won't be an easy sell for many, but I believe our district parents are compassionate enough to make the changes needed. Let the Olentangie High School community rename themselves. We've heard from the relatives of those who were forced off their native land and sent walking eight hundred to Oklahoma. Let us show them that we hear them and we respect them, and we want to honor them. Let's do this, Olentangie. Next, Carol Randolph, no address given. Good evening, school board members. Words matter. They shape our attitudes, direct our actions, and reveal our intentions. Words form perspectives of ourselves, members of our community, and the world around us. Words are so important that the code of conduct found in the Olentangie handbook places boundaries on what words are and are not acceptable in our school buildings. The fourth code of conduct says this, quote, "Students shall not use obscene, vulgar, profane, or discriminatory language, make inappropriate gestures, actions, or possess vulgar materials. Note: Discriminatory language is defined as verbal or written comments, jokes, and slurs that are derogatory towards an individual or group based on one or more of the following characteristics: race, color, national origin," end quote. This code of conduct found in the high school handbook is important and ironic. It's important because it clearly states discriminatory language, including slurs, are not acceptable in our schools. It's ironic because the Olentangie High School mascot name is in fact a racial slur. The school itself is in violation of its own code of conduct. While there are conflicting views in our community regarding whether or not Olentangie High should maintain use of the name Braves, there is no question that the term Braves is offensive to many in the Native American community. Here's an excerpt from the Native Circle website, which is the oldest Native American educational website, quote, "What is wrong with Indian mascots and team names? The answer to this question is both complex and simple. The simple answer is that they are disrespectful and hurtful to First Nations people. Some of the names and antics seen at games are nothing less than racist. So here we are, decades later, and names like Red asterisk 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 NS and Braves are still being used by sports teams and by public schools with no thought of how blatantly racist these terms are. Since the first use of so-called Indian mascots over eighty years ago, real Indian people have publicly protested against them. Here, we continue that protest and ask that finally, after so long, people of good heart will listen," end quote. Regardless of our opinions, the name associated with the Olentangie High School mascot is a racial slur. It is both offensive and demeaning to many Native Americans. That is just a fact. I, along with many other Olentangie parents, encourage you to change the mascot imagery and name at Olentangie High School because words matter. Thank you. There is no more public participation.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion item. It's Mr. Wright. It's time for a new calendar.
Good evening, everyone. In the midst of all this, we still have to keep an eye on the far, far way. And I bring to you tonight a brief discussion about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district calendar. And each of you have these two models that we will share with our community tomorrow. We want to make sure we have a chance to present to you, answer any questions you might have. So first, just a couple of process points about our calendar. One of the things that we need to understand is that this calendar we're discussing is the framework that drives every other calendar in the district. This establishes the start date and the end date for the school year and establishes appropriate breaks in accordance with the contract and state law. So what I'm presenting to you tonight is a culmination of several different versions that we looked at, trying to think about different opportunities for how we will run our calendar, and was vetted through our cooperation with OTA. Spent a lot of time with Ms. Elaine Eddy, and she and I conversed about what this looks like from perspectives for staff and students and families. And then we spent a lot of time looking at how it aligns with what we've done in the past. So in essence, the first calendar you're looking at tonight, Draft A, is basically our, our traditional calendar, probably the calendar that is most similar to the ones we have been bringing to you since the summer of two thousand and fifteen. As we continue to receive feedback, we have established as our traditional start date being the third Thursday in August. So you will see that reflected here. Another part of our traditional calendar is that we look at our winter break. When does it coincide? And we have typically done two weeks off from school. So this traditional calendar has the end of the semester for students on December sixteenth, with winter break running through January first and students returning on Monday, January second. And then there is a teacher workday embedded in that break. The third item I wanted to bring to your attention is that our spring break has become commonplace as the last week in March. We have done that in the last several calendars. Regardless of where the, the, the spring holiday occurs, so we have kept that last weekend or last week of March. And then the fourth thing is the end date. We have for a while now had an ending before Memorial We have for a while now had an ending before Memorial Day, and this calendar reflects that as well. The final thing I wanted to point out to you, and we do get feedback on this, in the upper right-hand corner in red, we also present the number of student days that are in each semester. Based on how the calendar is broken up, the first semester would be seventy-nine student days and the second semester would be ninety-four student days. And while we understand it's a, a great disparity, three weeks worth of instruction, we also know that our second semester is typically when we will have weather issues and we lose instructional days. So we would be okay front-loading some of that. And that's also our testing season in April, which has tremendous impact on our, our schedules for students as well. So we do acknowledge that, but we do keep that disparity because the other item that we wanted to occur is that we have seen that ending our semester and wrapping up the first semester before the winter break has been very appreciated, very much appreciated by our students, our staff, and the families that break can be a break. And so that's kind of the goal with this calendar. So it is presented as what you have traditionally seen. I do want to then show you quickly Draft B and try to get a, a concept for this. It's a little more about holiday flex on this calendar. The start date does not change. Winter break, because of the holidays over winter break occur on Sunday, we may have some families who continue to work during that, that last week of December or the second to last week of December. So in this calendar, we're, we're going a little bit longer. We're going to go three more days to end the semester on Wednesday, December twenty-first. As we look at it, and again, we don't want to, the, the concept to be that high schools drive the calendar, but we typically have three days of exams. So with that concept, it would be the exam week and then break. We still wrap up the semester. The teacher workday then would be on Tuesday, January third, with students coming back for a three-day week starting on Wednesday, January fourth. It is still tipped the, the traditional two weeks off. It's just Wednesday to Wednesday for our families instead of Saturdays to Saturdays. So that's something we want to get some feedback on. The other thing we've changed on this calendar is our spring break. Each year in the last few years, we have gotten a lot of comments from our community about the Monday after Easter. And as they, they think about it in terms of the Thanksgiving holiday and because of teacher professional development occurring on the Monday after our Thanksgiving break, they've always had that extra day for family travel. So they've, they've put that in there as feedback and we wanted to look at a calendar because of the way that everything falls. This calendar does reflect that as an option that we would like to get some feedback on. What it does, though, is move a spring break to the first full week in April and with the Monday, April tenth, off as well as the, the second conference exchange day. This calendar actually shortens, not shortens, but brings up the end of the school year by one day and the, the teacher, students would finish on a Wednesday and a teacher workday would be on the twenty-fifth of May, but everything is still wrapped up before Memorial Day. And then the last thing that I, I share, we get closer on our separation of days between the two semesters. Eighty-two student days in the first semester, ninety-one in the second. There's still some disparity, a little bit closer than the fifteen that is presented on Draft B. So real quick, let me finish the process and I'll take any questions. Our district policy says that once we present calendars, we will get feedback from our community and our community includes our, our, our teachers. And we will do that starting tomorrow. When we send out the Board of Education update, Mrs. Davis and her team will send a link to a survey created by Dr. Fettie and it will allow our community and teachers to provide feedback on the two calendars. And there are some items that they would rank as most important to them as they consider a calendar. We will have this link open for thirty days at minimum. And then we will review that with our goal to present to you our final draft for, for your vote at the end of, or the second meeting in April. So that is our timeline for that. With that, I'll take any questions on either of the two calendar models.
Question? I, I just want to point out, when you're giving your feedback, the feedback is not start after Labor Day. We've already been over that hump. I know we'll get people who say, well, we go to Rehoboth Beach in August, but we have determined that being able to break with exams at the holiday break is what's best for the students. I know in the Atlanta area, they start August one, no matter what. We're not starting August one. But I will warn you, once your children get into high school and get into activities, they're starting with band and all the fall sports on August one. So, you know, you might as well be in school, but we're not. We're starting in the middle of August. So that is not a question. It's these two calendars here that we're making a determination on.
Correct. And again, it's not, it's not, we're not seeking a vote. This is provide feedback on the two models and we provided some, some different items than we have in the past to get some feedback on some of these new options as well. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, shuffling my papers. All right. With our amended agenda, we have to take action on approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Olentangy Teachers Association. Again, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, this would normally be a contract year for us. We have offered the teachers to extend the current contract with no changes for one year. So do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rafe, is there anything that you would like to add to this?
No.
Okay, again, everything stays the same. It's a two and a half percent increase, just like they have gotten a wage increase, just like they've gotten in years past. All the language stays the same. Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have some superintendent action items. Could you present those, please, Mr. Rafe?
Ma'am, I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items A through F for approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
So Kevin and Lakeisha, call the roll, please. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Beesel?
Yes.
And now, I just need a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March twenty-fifth. We'll have the redistricting announcement and it'll be the last meeting before spring break. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Send move.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Call the roll, please. Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Beesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.